Okay, let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, November 13th. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Flags up here.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Jim Vanson.
Here.
Pat Gertie.
Here.
Kevin Huber.
Here.
Scott Luce. Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Jack Thurman.
Here. Okay, we note for the record Scott Luce is absent tonight. Let's see, our agenda tonight, we will have an opening for public comment. Our educational presentation involves some student recognition. We'll have reports from the Student School Board reports, or yeah, Student School Board reps, superintendent's report, the consent vote agenda which was reviewed last week in committee to be approved, updates from program and personnel and facilities and finance. Since Scott's not here, I assume we have no property update per se. And Karen, anything?
I agree.
Okay. Jim, anything? My name is Peter.
You're free.
All right. And then we will have an executive session tonight. The topic is purchase of real property. That's five ILCS 120/2C5. We will not be taking any action or having any additional updates after that executive session. And that should do it. All right, I'll open up for public comment. Anybody from the public would like to speak?
Good evening, Board of Education. As you know, I'm the mom of a senior here. I wanted to start off because I don't think we say this often, I thank you all for your volunteer service on this board. It's tough and I appreciate you all doing it. So you all know I come to fair amount of meetings and I get to see you all in action. It's pretty interesting. Tonight I notice you're going to be working on four C, Board Policies, on the Board Member Oath and Conduct Exhibit, which I'm really glad to see you all do that. I know it comes down from the state, you know, you get state language there, but I think it's important that we have, that these things are clear, that we have a vehicle if somebody has concerns to be able to address them. So I want to thank you guys for getting ahead on that and for leading that. Specifically, I wanted to draw your attention to Policy 2.2, one of the organizational Board of Education meeting. The night that, the last night that you guys added two more members to this board, when Matt and Kevin were added, it was a long, arduous board meeting. I think that election happened around 10:30, 10:45 at night. It was a marathon. And I know everybody was tired, you all were ready to be done, that you needed to get your business done, and you did. When it came time to elect your board members, I have to, I want to encourage you guys next time to do a little more thorough survey of who's interested in the different positions and really have a vigorous discussion about who would be the best person to be the board president, to be the board secretary. I was a little surprised that night because when it came to it, somebody said, "Pat, you've been it. Would you like to continue?" And Pat graciously said, "Yep." And that was the entire discussion for our Board of Education president. Pat may well be the most qualified person sitting on the board that night. You all know the process is important to me. I would have liked to have seen that I've been a little more open and ask of everybody, including your two new board members, if anybody was interested in the position. I personally would like to see Scott Luce do it at some point. I think he's been on the board long enough, I think, to be a good board president. But anyway, I'm going to encourage you guys to not gloss over those appointments next time, please. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, so we'll move on to our student recognition video.
All right. I don't know if this is on.
Yeah, you got to question.
Just asking hold. Well, I'm going to just very proudly introduce Mr. John Fischel, who is our interim co-athletic director extraordinaire. And he is going to talk about some of our amazing Libertyville High School student athletes.
I'm actually just proud to introduce the head coach of each of our programs that are here tonight and give them an opportunity to talk about their athletes. First, our head girls cross-country coach, Bill Etteneyer. Why don't you come on up, Bill? And you can bring your athletes in.
All right, thank you, Board of Education, everybody that's here tonight. First timer, Melissa is obviously the best that I've ever coached, so you know, I haven't necessarily had the honor to be up here and introduce one of my athletes before. You know, but Melissa obviously had an amazing end to her season this last weekend at the IHSA State Meet. Prior to the State Meet, she won the county invite, she won the Racine Invite, she won the Palatine Invite, she was NSC Conference Champion, she was Regional Champion. The only meets that she really didn't win this year, she was fourth place once and third place twice, and she only lost to other fellow All-State runners that were All-State this past weekend. So this past weekend at Detweiler, she was lucky enough to be eighth place in the state. She ran, depending on which website you look at, 1633 or 1634, somewhere in that ballpark, but she was eighth place in the state of Illinois in 3A. And when you look over the last 15 years, pretty much since girls have ran three miles on the state course at Detweiler, her time also ties her for 29th overall in the state of Illinois all-time on the state course. So she is a phenomenally talented athlete. She's involved in a lot of other things, but we are very proud. And yeah, Melissa Manich is here with us.
Yes, let's take some pictures, for sure. John, come on, come on, John.
Let's get the parents in here. People say, "Cam, you know, spread."
Sorry, sir.
Can you guys want to take any pictures? Because we're now.
And next, I'd like to ask our boys' head cross-country coach, Stu Mendelson, to come on up.
Thank you, Board. Motivated, driven, and inspired for greatness, these are only a few words I can describe Alex Tam and the success he's had in his four-year career on the boys' cross-country team at Libertyville High School. As a senior this year, Alex won the Rebel Invite, Wakanda Invite, Libertyville Invite, and was runner-up at the County Invite, Palatine Invite, and Wheeling Invite. Alex was Conference Champion, Regional Champion, and All-Sectional, and qualified for the IHSA State Meet. At the State Meet, Alex ran his fastest time of 14:41, taking 15th place, making him All-State on a course that was non-ideal after five races had already taken place and rained during the previous night. Alex has had great success as a runner for the boys' cross-country team while still maintaining a 4.471 GPA in his academics. Most important, Alex has strong character, which I think is the most important trait a person can have, and that is why I'm proud to present to the Board tonight Alex Tam.
year head coach for the boys' soccer team, this is Kevin Thunholm.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and recognizing the boys. We had a fantastic season. We won the North Shore College Showcase in New Trier. That was our first championship. Then we won, we shared conference, which the boys were a little bummed about, but we came out, won regionals, sectionals, supersectionals, and then we finished with second place, state championship. So I'm very proud of these guys. We have numerous individual awards. These guys were amazing all year long. We talk about them on the field, you know, they're fantastic skilled players, but off the field, these guys showed such great character. For a community to get behind these guys, I couldn't be more proud. Every day, it was a pleasure to go out and work with these guys. So these are your second-place champions here. I will go down, I have several of them. First, Austin. Austin Becker, you want to come on down? Jacob, are you here? Jacob's not here. Zach, are you here? Zach! Nick, I think I saw you, Nick, come on down. Grant Herbeck, come on down. Parker, Parker here? Parker's not here. Max Johnson, are you here? No, Max. Ryan Klenos, I don't think I saw Ryan. Greg. Brandon Murphy is not here today. Mickey, Mickey Riley, I do not believe is here tonight. Carter, Carter, come on down. Thomas, come on down. Luke Underwood, I do not believe is in attendance. Jack, Jack, come on down. And last but not least, Ryan Whittenbury. So thank you very much for recognizing these young gentlemen. a minute. We know that the young men and women don't get to the level that your kids are at athletically
Maybe we have you guys kind of squeeze together for pictures, see your parents and take the pictures.
and academically without a lot of support over the years from parents and family members.
They usually know the drill by this point.
What's your paper now?
This is our favorite thing to do, is to celebrate success of the kids at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School.
Yeah, what's your paper?
And fortunately, with your great support and your family's great support and the community's
Thank you.
Hey, guys, just let them take all the pictures they want to take.
Yes, he's fine.
great support, we have a lot of this kind of success at both schools. Oh, yeah, yeah. And certainly finishing second in the state, placing in the state is phenomenal. So guys, let's take a minute, and if the cross-country folks are here, let's give your parents a round of applause. So thank you. Now, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. However, you're not going to hurt our feelings if you exit the stage and left, okay? So thank you for coming. Okay, guys, before parents, before you read, if all of us are recognized, we want to take a minute. We know that the young men and women don't get to the level that your kids are at athletically and academically without a lot of support over the years from parents and family members. This is our favorite thing to do, is to celebrate success of the kids at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School. And fortunately, with your great support and your family's great support and the community's great support, we have a lot of this kind of success at both schools. And certainly finishing second in the state, placing in the state is phenomenal. So guys, let's take a minute, and if the cross-country folks are here, let's give your parents a round of applause. So thank you. Now, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting. However, you're not going to hurt our feelings if you exit the stage and left, okay? So thank you for coming. Congratulations. Ready to go. All right, Student School Board Representatives, who would like to go first?
I will. All right, so through V H GIVE, we're raising money for our sister school in Uganda. So every time students go on the trip, they come back and tell us that at nighttime by seven o'clock, it's completely pitch black and students can't really go on with their studies or playing sports like they want to. So we decided to try and buy a Lucy light for each one of the 210 students. That's basically just a light this big, and it's solar-powered. And we're trying to go into each student through our V H GIVE club. And the original goal was each class to raise enough money for just one, which wouldn't leave us with enough lights, but it ended up going really well, and classes were raising up to $80 and $90 on the first day alone. So we're definitely going to reach our goal for getting one to each student. And also, the sister school runs classes for adult moms, literacy classes, and they too have to walk in the dark to those classes. So we're trying to raise enough money to get each of those moms a light as well. And then in sports, Lauren Katz and the girls' cross-country team placed third at the IHSA State Meet. She individually placed 11th, gaining All-State for her third year in a row. And boys' cross-country did not place as a team, but Jimmy McDonald went down and got 33rd place, and those individuals will be recognized at the next meeting.
All right, our musical curtain, an annual dinner for the senior residents, went well last week. Our school is starting a new initiative where staff, it's called Student Table Chats, where staff are going to go to student tables in the cafeteria during the last 10 minutes of their lunch and talk about issues that are pertinent to them, and then report it back to a committee that can work on those issues. So for example, the first one is going to be a later start time, and then the feedback that they get from the students is going to be shared with the late start time committee. We had a survey that was sent out to students that was called Profiles of V H H S Graduate, just to hear about students' vision on how they see themselves in the future, and that information is also going to be used to improve our mission statement. The community screening of Screenagers is hosted by Cougar Parent Connection and Student Assistance Program, that's going to be on December 6. This past Sunday, our girls' cross-country team hosted the Hustle for Harvey 5K and Kids Fun Run at Vernon Hills High School to benefit the victims of the Hurricane Harvey in Texas. The Variety Show this Friday will also be, the money for the tickets from the Variety Show will also be given towards Uganda, but specifically to purchase the curriculum that the teachers need to get the standardized testing for students. Since it's a private school, our sister school's a private school, so they don't get like the state standardized testing that the other schools do. And in order to, for students to go to high school, they need to take that testing, so that's what the money will be using, will be used for.
So for athletics, as you all are probably aware of, the soccer team finished second at state, which is a huge accomplishment. And Melissa Manich and Alex Tam received All-State at their state cross-country rate in Peoria. And then the Wildcats signed their letter of intent this past week. And then also the boys' soccer, or the boys' basketball will kick off their start season this Friday with a scrimmage in the main gym. And then a huge congratulations to the girls' swimming and diving team for their third-place finish at sectionals this past Saturday. The falling swimmers and dive girls will be moving on to the state swim meet this Friday and Saturday at New Trier High School. Claire Newberger, Emma Gleason, Alex Eastman, Allison Martini, and Paige Rankin will be continuing on in state. So this Thursday, students from D128 are invited to the movie theater at AMC 12 for premiere viewing of the movie Wonder. Wonder is a movie about a fifth-grade boy with facial differences who attends a public elementary school. Following the movie, there will be a Q and A with craniofacial families and LHS's own Peter Dinkelson. All proceeds from this event will benefit Children's Craniofacial Association. And then in addition, IHS Student Council successfully organized this year's canned food drive. With the help of third-period classes, IHS exceeded their goal of what was 10,000 cans. So third-periods classes collectively donated 4,000 cans, and Student Council collected another 5,000 cans from the community. Student Council also made a $1,000 donation to the Libertyville Food Pantry, allowing for another 3,585 cans to be purchased. A big thanks to everyone who made the donation of 12,585 food items to the pantry possible. And then this past weekend, Model UN had a convention at Stanford.
All right, so on November 9th, IHS hosted an art show called Inside Out for Feeder Schools as well as a band festival. November 2nd to 4th, IHS students put on the musical The King and I. The students did a fantastic job with this, and it was clear that all their hard work the previous months really paid off. Wish season is in full swing here at IHS, and WISH stands for Wildcat Initiative for caring during the holidays. So right now, every third-period class is raising money in order to purchase gifts for needy families. And so every day, what this looks like is students and staff are greeted outside the cafeteria with classes selling all sorts of things, like fried rice, there was waffles today, and just other baked goods. And all the proceeds from these kind of fundraisers go to benefit these classes, third-period WISH class. So students are really getting creative in all their fundraising efforts, and it's just so incredible to see all of IHS United over just this idea spreading joy during the holiday season here. IHS hosted their first Military Appreciation Breakfast. As part of their celebration of Libertyville High School's Military Appreciation Month, the school invited its school's families with an immediate member, actively serving in the military, to enjoy a Military Family Appreciation Breakfast on Wednesday, November 8th. Staff members who are military veterans were also invited to attend this event. In addition, in honor of Veterans Awareness Month, freshmen are also making care packages in their linker groups to be sent overseas to an LHS alumni's unit. To go along with this theme of just Veterans Month, Social Studies Department Head, Mr. Sean McCusker, spent the previous weeks organizing a Veterans Wall of Honor. And upon walking into the school last week, students saw sheets of paper hung all throughout the front foyer honoring IHS students and staff who have family members who have served in the military. In this week, students also will have the opportunity to write a letter to a soldier, which will also be sent overseas. Students attended German Immersion Day at Northwestern University this past week. Fifteen IHS German students made the pledge to speak German for a whole day this past Saturday, November 4th, a German immersion day sponsored by the local chapter of American Association of Teachers of German, which was held at Northwestern University. And then tomorrow, here at IHS, Cast to College Part One will be taking place, and this is just an informative session concerning all aspects of the college application process for juniors and their parents.
All right, great job. All right, next, the superintendent's report.
Hey, Pat, borrow the microphone here for a minute. And always more great news to share. So tonight, we just want to remind the audience that maybe watching at home and some of our guests who are here for the meeting this evening, that the Vernon Hills Girls Cross-Country Team finished third in the state, the same weekend as the boys' soccer team finished second, and we will be recognizing them next month in December at Vernon Hills High School. The following students were named LHS October Students of the Month, Daniel Morrissey, Tyler Kucla, Grace Below, Molly Grayton, Grace Albright, Greg Renix, Nick Rogers, Thomas Power, Savannah Stevens, McKenna Rodolphy, Sabina Bronco, Catherine Hay, and Oscar Pena. More than 200 senior citizens and residents of District 128 joined us for the annual dinner and musical at Vernon Hills High School. We appreciate the continued support of our senior citizens. Special shout-out to the members of V H H S National Honor Society for helping serve our special guests. We couldn't do it without you. And before the winter holiday, we will have a similar event here at Libertyville High School, and then the students will see one of the winter holiday music programs. It's always really exciting to have our seniors in, it's one of our favorite things to do. Members of the V H H S Spezian Troop 6386 of the International Spezian Society, ITS, the Honor Society for High School Theater students collected 5,009 pounds of non-perishables that were donated to the Vernon Township Food Pantry as part of Treat So Kids Can Eat, so it's tots eat. As mentioned earlier, the LHS Student Council joined forces with third-period classes in the community for its annual canned food drive. They collected 4,000 items during the third-period competition and another 5,000 collected last Saturday during the neighborhood blitz. Kathleen O'Connor at the Food Pantry reports that cans are still being dropped off at the pantry. Stu Co gave $1,000 to the Libertyville Township Food Pantry so it can purchase directly from the Northern Illinois Food Bank, and they have heard that the money purchased an additional 3,580 items of food. Thank you to everyone who helped the school community exceed its goal and donate approximately 12,585 food items to the pantry. I think, I want to stop here because I think it's important that the community knows the level of community service that our kids do at both schools. And this is just phenomenal, the give-back that the students have done to our two local communities, but also the townships and Lake County. So we really appreciate that, again, just, you know, a stellar group of young people in our district. V H H S Media students won the first Student Silent Film Festival 2017, held on November 11th at San Filippo State in Barrington. A select group of high schools from the Midwest Media Educators Association were invited to participate in the event. Members of the V H H S team who produced the film included James Alsho, director and writer Eric Johnson, production assistant Sebastian Dominic, cinematography and special Eric Johnson, production assistant Sebastian Dominic, cinematography and special effects, Michael Littman, writer and actor, Nathan Jay and Derek Scholl, VH media members, and the VH media advisor is Sandy Martin. And as mentioned earlier, I think, the Vernon Hills folks mentioned this, members of the VHS Girls Cross-Country Team hosted a 5K and Kids Fun Run yesterday to benefit the victims of Hurricane Harvey in Houston. Hustle for Harvey raised $2,800 for United Way of Greater Houston, exceeding their set goal by $800. As part of the celebration of Libertyville High School's Military Appreciation Month, the school invited its school families with an immediate family member who is actively serving in the military to enjoy a Military Family Appreciation Breakfast, as was mentioned on Wednesday, November 8th. Staff members who are military veterans also attended the event. During the breakfast, the families shared stories about, families shared stories about their family and their military connections, and enjoyed table activities, and I know that this activity is gonna continue to expand, it's really a great way to recognize our veterans. So congratulations to our students and the adults who work with them for all of those good things. Next on the agenda, the superintendent's report is the LHS Pool Project, and I'm gonna let Mark comment on that a little bit, because we're starting to see more movement over there, but we wanna give a shout-out to the village of Libertyville, who voted to waive all of the normal fees that would be associated with construction, except for the fees that they are required to collect by other government agencies. And my memory is correct, Mark, I think that's in the neighborhood of about $78,000 for the fees?
Yeah, the approximate fees that they waive for...
So that's significant, because that doesn't always happen. In working relationships with schools and their local municipalities, since the law changed several years ago, and all school construction now goes through local municipalities instead of the regional offices of education. So we're very thankful to the village for their courtesy to the district, and of course, it's all the same tax dollar, and that $78,000 will be able to use, be used for kids in the district, so thanks to them. So Mark, without further ado, you wanna bring us up to speed to where we're at on the school pool?
We made good progress last week, we hauled off a lot of dirt, so started digging on the site so we'd get down and put foundation in, footings for the foundation walls. Obviously, the weather has held us up a couple days with the rain, but looking forward, we hope to start with concrete footings by the end of this week.
And do you wanna share with the public our permit status? Cause you had a little, you had a little good news last week on that.
Yeah, a little good news, we received the permits from the village, our final permits, with conditions. We are still waiting on one permit from IEPA for the water main, but otherwise, we are all set, and we're moving forward with the project.
Yeah, that's great. Any questions, board members? Okay, wonderful.
Still hard to believe.
It is hard to believe we're finally there, that's for sure. Next on the superintendent's agenda tonight is Illinois School Report Card, and Rita's gonna share a little information with us. This is required by Illinois state law, has been for a number of years now, and that is available to the public, so Rita's just gonna give us a quick overview. So Rita?
Thank you, Brian. Very quick overview, it's the time of year when we post the Illinois State School Report Card on our website, so I just wanted to let you know that that's there and available for everyone to see. Among the indicators of our success on the school report card are the ACT graduating class data, that we've seen those numbers before, but we'll review them quickly tonight. The Ready for College Coursework indicator, which is the percentage of our students who earn a 21 or higher on the ACT, the percent of students meeting ACT benchmarks, freshmen on track, the percent of freshman students who pass five or more classes and fail fewer than .5 credits, and our AP coursework, and new this year is the SAT performance levels. So just a quick comment on the indicators ahead of the SAT performance levels, is that, you know, in every single one of those indicators, we're performing far above state averages and, and well above area schools and districts in terms of the percent of our students who are succeeding and ready to enter college coursework, the percent of our freshmen who are on track. So, you know, we look at this data as this is exactly what we should be doing, it's important to measure, but by every indicator, we're far exceeding expectations in terms of our students' preparation. New this year, on the report card, replacing our ACT composite score data as part of the state test, as you'll recall, is the SAT results. So the difference between what you see in the ACT composite score is that these scores have always been published as the graduating class data, so this is the most recent score on ACT taken by students in our district. This will be the last time in 2017 that we'll report, we probably will have many, if not all of our students taking ACT, but we're not administering that district-wide on a school day any longer. So this is probably the last time we'll see this complete data, and from this point forward, we'll be looking at SAT performance. The SAT scores reported on the report card, are those earned by students on the school day administration? So these are the junior scores that students have earned. So we've looked at this, we've seen the tremendous growth in our ACT composite scores, so we'll move on to the SAT scores. This was just reported in the Chicago Tribune at the end of last week, in comparison with area districts, on the first-ever kind of baseline year of school-wide administration of the ACT. When you look at Illinois districts, Libertyville ranked 11th among districts and Vernon Hills 18th, and if you remove the selective enrollment Chicago Public Schools, Libertyville would be ranked 7th and Vernon Hills 11th in the state of Illinois on this first-time ever school-wide administration of that exam. So we're really pleased with the results. When we look at comparison districts, we know that we're doing as expected, and we're preparing our students for using this SAT score for admission to selective universities. Finally, we've seen the AP score data previously as well, generally this time of year, we report this out in conjunction with the information that you'll find on the school report card. I do just wanna say, upon conclusion of these report card indicators, that we've really spent this year talking about the other indicators of our students' success, the things that can't be measured, and we've been intentionally bringing that to you at every board meeting, the kind of really innovative work that our teachers are doing with our students, the success our students are having, not only on these one-time measures of their success, but on the many different things that they do to contribute to the community, to engage themselves in deeper learning, and to really prepare themselves for success when they leave us. So that's the conclusion of our assessment data report. And if you'd like more information, please go to the website and open up the school report card, which is posted there.
Any other questions? Okay. Just wanna, once again, compliment the district and building leadership, and of course, the great work by the teachers and our support staff, and the support of our communities. Our continued increases in student achievement are phenomenal. Our growth in ACT over a 12-year window, and our growth in our Advanced Placement Program are second to none in the country, and what that indicates is that more and more students are being more and more successful in the school district, and that's a really exciting thing about that. So Rita, thank you for sharing that information. Okay, next on the superintendent's report tonight is the Illinois Hundredth Legislature, which was a very bumpy session, and they just finished the veto session. But to that point, there are two things that may impact District 128 and districts like ours across the state, versus Senate Bill 1947, which is, we would better see as the school funding reform package, which we worked long and hard, almost 15 years, in the state to get that done. We have the most inequitable school funding formula in the United States, everyone acknowledged that, we just could not get a political solution to that, through the work of a lot of people and a grassroots movement, from educators and school businesspeople across the state, the state finally voted in a new school funding formula that would send additional resources to those districts that need them, without taking resources away from the districts that already have them. That is exciting news. However, as part of Senate Bill 1947, part of that bill would allow citizens in school districts that are beyond 110% adequacy in the education fund to put a, to seek petition signatures and put a measure on the ballot that could reduce the property tax rate up to 10% in a given school district. The districts will remain capped by PTAL, or the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, better known as tax caps, so the ability for school districts to recover those funds at some point is impossible because of that threshold. Doing the math in our district, it looks like that would have about a $5 million impact on us, and of course, that would carry forward year over year over year in the future, so that's a concern. If we take $5 million out of our budget, that would have some significant impact on our school district moving forward, and people would feel that change. The second piece of legislation that was proposed during the veto session is an attachment to, really an unrelated bill, a library bill, was Senate Bill 851, and that particular bill is a straight property tax cap bill. That bill was passed overwhelmingly in the House, and it would call for a two-year property tax freeze, or zero increase in the rate over the next two years, with an option two years out to do, by ballot, to do additional limitation at 0%. So the danger for a district like ours, of course, we're all wrestling with very high property taxes, including me, I live in the community and pay property taxes here as well. The concern is if we do those two things together, what happened, would have a pretty dramatic impact on District 128. Our feeder districts that would be impacted by Senate Bill 1947, the ability to reduce taxes by 10%, or the tax rate by 10%, District 70 might also be impacted by that legislation, District 68, and I believe Roundout as well. District 73 in Hawthorne is below that threshold, so they would not be impacted by 1947, but everybody in the state would be impacted by the other bill. That bill went to the Senate, the final day of the veto session, and the Senate, to their credit, I think, heard us loud and clear across the state, indicate that that was not enough time for us to make an adjustment if that was passed in the Senate. Remember, in Illinois, the way it works is, we have already done our budget, we're getting ready to pass a levy tonight that will fund that budget for this year, and if we went to 0%, because that bill would have taken effect immediately for levy year 17, we would have no way to match revenue and expenses. So I think taxing bodies across the state, you know, reached out to their senators, and they said, "We will consider that in the spring." So right now, we'll sit in the Senate when it goes back, and we'll only need a simple majority to pass if it comes in the spring session. So we'll be monitoring both of those bills very closely, we'll be working with our legislators here and legislators across the state, as we always do, to make sure that our legislators understand the impact at the local level on districts across the state on both bills, and particularly in communities like ours, where there may be that double whammy effect and a really heavy impact on the programs that we run locally. So I think we've been keeping the board up to speed, but we wanted to take a couple minutes and make sure that the community is also aware of that tonight. Any questions on that from the board? Okay, well, we have a little good news tonight, and I think Mark and I are gonna walk around here, Stuart and I will talk. The next thing on the superintendent's agenda tonight is a Brainer Memorial update, and as you know, the, the basic memorial is done, but we've been waiting for the plaque that goes on the memorial, so we received that. The board's aware of the design that we used, so Mark and I are gonna try and lift this up, at about 100 and whatever pounds, and why don't we start over here, and we'll show, Mark turn your... Sorry, my time's there, guys. Okay, so, we're just walking, Mark.
You're not straining yourself, it's not a picture.
Oh, it's okay, we just don't wanna drop it.
Well, I don't really wanna see the background.
It's okay.
Ah, it's awesome.
It's really nice.
Okay. So, we're gonna walk down here.
Very nice.
Okay, you're doing okay?
Yeah.
That's good. Okay, now we're gonna turn around, let Stuart see it.
Okay.
Okay? You got it, Stuart?
Just about.
And Hannah will walk up on you guys.
No, you're fine.
Okay, good, alright, we're good. Okay, so, we'll let Mary go on. Okay, let's move up, so, don't trip on the cord.
No, yeah. It's very nice, very, very well, very tasteful. Thank you.
You good, Hannah?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm gonna lead. Okay, let's, yeah, that'll be fine. Why don't you drop your, your camera?
That's great.
Okay, there we go.
Alright.
That's my workout for tonight. And I will tell you, it's real monumental, it's actually bronze, so we're real excited. And if everyone recalls, on the front of the memorial, we have some of the accoutrements from the old building, and so the plaque will go on the back, and depending on which way you're approaching the plaque, I guess will be your perception of which is front and which is back. So it's very exciting, so that'll be mounted, Mark, when, next week or so?
Hopefully by the end of this week.
Okay, great, exciting. So we'll get a picture of that and put that out on social media. Okay, let's see. So we are to 2017 Tax Year Levy Recommendation. Just a review for the community, we had two standalone budget meetings this year, where the only focus of the meeting was the budget, it's about six hours of conversation on the budget at those two meetings, and Board and Administration agreed on a recommended budget, the board passed that budget, and now the board needs to pass a levy to support that, match, try to match revenue with expenses moving forward. We had a standalone special meeting just on the tax levy recently, again, so the board could just focus on the levy moving forward, and of course, both of those discussions are very important to all of us, as they provide adequate resources for the district, but they're also fair to taxpayers in the district, and the board and the administration take those conversations very seriously. Just an overview for the basic budget that the levy would fund, is roughly $78 million, and we've taken several actions over the past few years to be as frugal as we can with the budget. Part of that is we flatlined at zero the building budgets for the last three years in a row. We reduced four district-level positions over the last two years or so, which is about 20% of district-level positions in the district, and we have also staffed tighter when we go through the staffing process, being mindful of optimum sizes that we look for, but we've staffed closer to those suggested caps. As a service organization, about 70% of our cost is people, because we're in the service business. So we've taken several measures to get to that point. So we are going to do basically a, a quick review of the work that the board has done to get to the levy decision tonight. So with that as a lead-in, I'm gonna turn it over to Dan Stanley, Assistant Superintendent for Finance.
Yeah, so the levy, the recommended levy up before you reflects the discussions we had at the previous, the previous board meeting, and so the entire levy, so that's presented before you is approximately $76.8 million. That's gonna include the adjusted...
That's gonna include the adjustment for inflation, which this year CPI is at 2.1, and an estimate for new property. But with that, we, you know, there's a cap that you're only allowed to increase by essentially the rate of inflation. And so, even though the levy is at 76.8, we're estimating that the most we're probably going to get extended is 76.5. And so, some of this is information that we don't know yet, we don't know what values will end up being, we don't actually know what the property will be, and so those numbers can vary between now and when we will get our final extension in the spring. But we're required by law to file the levy by the last Tuesday in December, so we have to make some assumptions about what those numbers will be. So, as I mentioned, the CPI is in there at the 2.1. Now, this doesn't mean that each individual property, the taxes they pay will go up 2.1%, the aggregate will be that, but each individual property will depend on their own individual assessment. What, and how does that assessment change relative to the overall tax base? In addition, the new property that's added on top will represent about a 0.4% change in our, in the levy. Now, new property coming on, that's not gonna affect existing properties because the new properties are added into the tax base. So, it looks like our tax rate is estimated to decrease from the 2.53, which is for the 2016, to an estimated about 2.46, so we're seeing a decrease. And that's really because there's an offsetting increase in the values of the property, the property values in our taxing district at about 4.9%. So, you have included for you the worksheet that kind of gives background information, the certificate for adoption, and several levies that you would hopefully adopt and will have to sign as well that will go along with this. And so, and we will file this with the county clerk right away. It has to be filed with the county clerk the last Tuesday in December. And you had appropriately at the last board meeting, we went through an estimate of what the levy is to comply with the U.S. Taxation Act, so we're on board with everything at this point unless there's any questions.
So, Dan, just a couple of points of review that I think are important for the community that we talked to the board about. So, the overall aggregate is capped at 2.1% because that's inflation, the number that, you know, we get from the government. And the new growth in the district, or new property in the district that's being brought online, we only have one opportunity to bring that new property online, or we lose the ability to access it later. And that's gonna add about an additional 0.4-ish. So, that takes the overall levy to 2.5. However, for individuals, or I guess businesses or corporations that are paying those taxes, they are not taxed for the additional new growth, is that correct?
Not yet, not specifically, or even in the aggregate. The aggregate effect will be for existing, for existing properties is gonna be 2.1.
2.1, so that's important to know, that in order to bring that new growth on, we have to levy for that new growth. And if we fail to do that, then we're gonna lose that new growth, kind of compounded over a period of time, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Hey, Dan, I don't know if you recall these numbers when we reviewed it, but just to highlight, what percent of our revenue is from local sources, number one? I'm thinking of that pie chart that you had. And if you could, I'd like you to just comment also on, I think there was a state average number and a national average number that I thought were pretty intriguing, actually.
Yeah, just give me one second to bring that up.
Because I think it really gets to the real root of, well, one of two roots anyway, for the high property taxes we experience in Illinois.
Yeah, so, maybe I'll start with the United States. So, the United States average, the split between what the local and state does, they end up splitting it about, call it about 45% each, pretty even split between state and local, and then national average.
If we were, if we were the national average, 45% of our revenue would come from local sources and 45% would come from the state.
Correct, and then the remaining around 9, 10% will come from the federal government. The difference is, in Illinois, the structure is very different. Roughly, two-thirds of the revenue sources come from the local, from the local community, and the biggest part of that is gonna be property taxes, but there's also fees and stuff associated with that. But the local community funds about two-thirds of that. The state is lucky if it gets close to a third on average, and then the federal government kicks in a little bit, probably around seven or eight percent. And these are based on national numbers that are a couple of years old, but the most current information you have is that, and the trend stays pretty similar over the years. But the difference in then, for a district, for our specific district, due to just the structure of everything, is the local revenues represent approximately, I wanna say, 95% of our revenues come from the local community here.
Okay.
And then, about 3% or so come from the state, and maybe one or so-ish comes from the federal government. I know it doesn't add up exactly, I'm just looking at a pie chart here, but that's roughly how it will work out.
Okay, so we have to raise about 95% of our revenue through local property taxes. Statewide, the number is more like 66%?
Correct, and we have to raise 95% of our resource, of our resources through the local community, which is a mixture of property taxes and like user fees and everything. The vast majority of that is going to be property taxes, but it is a combination of both.
And then the national average is obviously closer to 50, 50, 45, 45.
Okay.
All right, good, that was a great slide I know you showed. All right, so what is the motion that we're looking for here?
The recommended motion would be to approve the.
Pat, hold, just go ahead. Hey, Dan, I just wanna affirm, we had so many discussions about tax levy. And I know as part of those discussions, we asked you to go out and just bounce ideas off of our attorney, as well as other expert parties. You, I think, affirmed you did indeed do that. Everything's good from a legal point of view, everything's good from a, let's call it best practice, point of view as well. Is that?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, and to be frank, like, that was one of the best discussions I've had on levy, back and forth, and trying to work through and get closer on numbers, and that was really helpful, and we did confirm for sure in writing, you know, that everything is on board and makes sense, and is good with best practice, and, yeah.
No, and again, I think we all, I'll speak for myself, I think I speak for the board as saying, we appreciate your ability to take these numbers and actually put some expertise behind them to help out the district, in a manner that I think sometimes doesn't get appreciated enough, so thank you for that.
Okay, all right, so now, again, the motion is?
Really, the motion would be to approve the 2017 tax levy as recommended and presented.
Okay, all right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2017 tax levy as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Well, I just wanted a second to the comments, I thought that was a fantastic meeting, the tax levy meeting. The information was as clear as I've ever seen it in terms of really making sense out of what we're doing, and really being transparent, and really, you know, organizing things in a way that's really clear, so I appreciate that.
Anybody else? All right, roll call?
Atson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report. All right, thank you. Next, yeah, a quick question.
Sure.
Okay.
No, you're good without all that. These are all automatic.
Yeah, just a quick question I had when we were, when the student representatives were talking at Prentice about the Military Breakfast, which by the way is a fantastic program. A quick question that popped in my head was, do we have any idea what percentage of our employees are veterans? Staff?
I don't know the percentage, but at Libertyville High School, we were only able to identify three staff members who were veterans.
Okay.
And that's probably closer than those.
Yeah, all right, just thought in my head.
All right, good question. All right, the consent vote agenda is listed. This was the agenda we reviewed last week in the committee meeting. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Atson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next, program personnel, Chairperson Mauer.
All right, I don't know if you can hear me, but, all right, the first item is the 2018-19 and 2019-20 school calendar proposals. We went over these in committee. There was a very nice committee of parents, staff, and community members who went over this very diligently, and they're making the recommendation to adapt both years of those calendars as presented. Questions? Who would like to make the motion?
I would like to make that motion, to adopt the both years of the proposed school calendar for 1819 and 1920.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll just highlight again, once, this will be our second year, I guess, so starting early, finishing the first semester by the holidays, and then getting out very early, right? Probably worth highlighting as well for the community that we will have both graduations on the same night. That is a bit of a change, all right? But we'll divvy up the responsibilities between us and have a great, two great graduation ceremonies.
And also, too, is just we're going to do it two years at a time, and, you know, the second one, there's always room to change if you need, but it's good for planning purposes and for the feeder districts and families.
And with those two graduation dates in mind, we're designing the calendar backwards from that, with those two principles, the graduation date as well as finishing final exams before winter break, so.
Yeah, and everybody will finish finals before graduation.
Yes.
So, that was a thing we had to work through.
Yes.
All right, so any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Atson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have 2018-19 curriculum proposals. Those looked at different proposals from both high schools, additions and deletions. We're seeing more innovative coursework coming in, and the focus is good, really good. Thanks, Rita, for the work you did on that. So, looking for a motion to approve those proposals as presented.
I move to accept the 1819 curriculum proposals, the 2018 and 2019 curriculum proposals, make sure they're in the right century.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna echo Rita, your fantastic work on creating the curriculum, and, you know, there are some really innovative classes going in there, so it's definitely great to see our students moving into some 21st technology courses, so, thank you.
Thank you, and I have to commend our excellent educators, who are the original proponents of these courses, they're the experts in the field, and they, you know, no coursework comes before us without having that idea originate from a team of teachers, so we're really grateful to have the excellent educators that we do.
You know, one question, I either have been asked it a long time, or I just forgot. Do the students evaluate the courses at the end of the semester? Do they give you feedback?
Many teachers do have a process by which they ask for student feedback on the course design, and we have other mechanisms where we interview students as well on their, how they learn best, their satisfaction with courses, the kinds of activities that support their learning. We've done that in a number of ways, including through course feedback to teachers.
So, just to clarify, there isn't a standardized evaluation done by the district, it's teacher by teacher doing their own?
Yeah.
Okay.
It supports true teacher reflection, you know, the things that they're interested in, the kinds of feedback they're interested in from students, and then the results are their own, too.
And on top of that, we do do five, we are required to do five essentials for the state, so we get some additional feedback there. And the individual evaluations, if that were institutional, I think there are a couple of things. One, from a structural issue, that would be a contract issue, because it's moving forward. And secondly, it would be more of a cookie cutter approach to that, rather than individualized by the type of class that the student is going through, which would not give us as much, I believe, authentic feedback in English class and applied arts classes it might in a science class, for example.
I do think the question is a really good one, though, because this idea of student voice and choice in education, and their ability to tell us, you know, the kinds of things that support their learning, and the kinds of learning activities that most engage them in learning, I think is really key to moving forward, and our educators are keenly interested in what our students have to say.
In fact, to tie that into the innovation team, a big part of the innovation team are student voices on that innovation team, as we look at continuing to create the platform and framework, and the actual courses and goals that we are striving to achieve down the line, so that's all an important part of the process.
Yeah, and again, I guess we're on a roll here tonight, but it would be interesting to poll our students one or two years after they leave here, and find out what it was that we did that was most impactful to them in college or wherever they were. I don't know if we've done that, I know we get a lot of informal feedback on that, but I think that'd be kinda fun, too. All right, so let's see, we had a motion, a second, a little bit of discussion, is that correct? All right, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, could I just ask Rita? Again, just to reaffirm with Matt, great work on the micro level of class selection. Question, though, is on a macro level, do we ever look at the concept of a student's overall curriculum, five AP classes being too many, and the ability to have an art class, or a band class, or a shop class, or a speech class, or a debate class, or things like that? Because, again, we know in Libertyville and Vernon Hills, the kids are high performing, the parents are high performing, a lot of stress, we've heard a lot of stress from the kids, and actually from the parents as well. Do we ever look at that on a macro level and say, hey, maybe we need to, I don't wanna say police, because we are not the police, but at some point, try to do what's best for the total student down the line?
And that's another very good question, and one that, you know, there are many groups of educators within the district who are looking at that question as well. I can speak from the innovation team, there's a group that's meeting separately, kind of on this topic related to how do we encourage students and their families to look at the kinds of deeper learning experiences that are available throughout the district, that colleges and universities tell us often, that it's not the number of AP courses, it's the depth of your experience and the kinds of learning experiences that you have. So, it's a communication tool. We also have our LSTs working with students in the course selection process to help them understand that they don't have to select every AP offering. When we add new AP offerings to our course selections, we intentionally target courses that may be for some student the only AP course that they choose while they're with us. So, our goal is always to expose as many students as we can to the kind of rigorous curriculum that will prepare them for the university, but not overexpose them to those courses, and not instill kind of this idea that it's the necessity that you take everything that we offer. Part of that, too, though, is this family, you know, choice and student decisions, and what really is most appropriate for them and best for them. So, you know, we do engage in these conversations continuously, how do we provide students and families with the maximum degree of flexibility and the kinds of offerings that will forward their interests, while not putting too much pressure on them to believe that they have to take everything that we have available? It's a delicate balance, and we do look at it all the time.
Thank you very much.
All right, anything else? If not, roll call, please.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Atson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving to part C, board policies. You've got six policies outlined there for second reading and adoption. Nothing has changed between the first and the second reading, all the information on the additions and deletions and new wording is the same. You have questions on that? Then we're looking for a motion to adopt those policies.
I move to adopt the six policies presented for the second reading and adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Atson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the D-128 graduate profile, and Rudy, have a presentation?
Actually, I don't have a presentation to share tonight, we just want to share a quick overview on the process that we've begun district-wide to begin to build the portrait of a D-128 graduate, that I think will address a lot of the questions that we've had from you tonight as well. What are the qualities and characteristics of graduates from our district? And how will we, together as a district, use that profile to reimagine our mission, our vision for students, and help it to guide us in our decision-making and planning? So, when we propose a new course, how does it align with those values? How does that help us to produce the kinds of students that we say will graduate from our schools in four years? So, we've put out a survey to the community, we've had our students at the two high schools participating in the survey this week. We've shared the information in e-pop prints and via social media, so, and we're also reaching out to the extent we can to our graduates, graduates to have them participate in the survey as well. So, we're excited about this process. When we get the data gathered, we're forming a district-wide writing team to help us design the visual representation of a D-128 graduate. What I said is called a profile of a graduate, so we'll have much more information and some previews of the early prototypes of the writing team's work. Hopefully, the work will conclude in January, and we'll present you a final product then.
And that creates a framework for our strategic plan moving forward.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Hope everyone took their surveys, I know I did. I don't have any others, does anyone have any other?
No other.
Okay, then we are finished with the program personnel.
Thank you. Facilities and Finance, Chairperson Atson.
Thank you, Dr. Rudy. We really only have one item on the agenda here, nothing for action, but just an update on the Libertyville High School future parking options.
Well, we went in depth at committee on some of the options that we're looking at. It's too early right now to zero in, we'll be working with the village as well on parking, but we're looking at some options that we, in addition to the 40 or so spaces that we lost for construction that we'll put back, that would create some additional parking on the LHS campus. So, we've gotta get a few more answers, but we shared a few options with the board at the FNF committee meeting, and we'll be back to the board for maybe as early as December to talk about that a little bit more, you know, as we frame that out and get some more answers. I think that's a fair way down to say it.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Nope.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, no property, brief seed all.
Yes, as you remember, the superintendent of seed all is retiring, Dr. Mullin, at the end of this year, and so the superintendent recruitment phase, the search is in place, and the recruitment period has ended. And the first round of interviews will begin at the end of the last few days of November, hoping to come up with two finalists to be selected and recommended to the governing board, and hoping to bring a recommendation to the governing board meeting in January on the 25th. So, just, it's moving along, and that's good news.
He will be missed, he's been very, very effective there.
Seems like he just came.
I feel like he just did.
Anything else? All right, IA, speak.
Just a quick reminder, this coming weekend, a number of us will be attending the, what's affectionately known as the Triple I Conference, the Joint Conference of the Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Association of School Administrators, and the Illinois Association of Chief of School Business Officials. It's called, the title is "Leading and Learning" this year. It's a very large statewide conference, some 10,000 people, educational leaders throughout the state meet in Chicago. I know, Dan, you're involved in a couple of presentations, and there's probably others that are as well, but it's an extremely well-run and valuable conference, so I will be representing us as our representative to the Illinois Association of School Boards meeting on Saturday, so, but I look forward to seeing at least some of you down there.
All right, thanks, Jim. All right, so now, we're gonna move to executive session. Again, the topic is purchase of real property, five ILCS 120/2C5. If I could ask for a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Atson.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Huber.
Aye.
Lundstedt.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Thurman.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, and again, there is no plan for any further action, or updates on any further information after the executive session tonight, all right? So, good night, everybody.